All right, welcome everyone. This is our work session of the Bountiful City Council, Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. We appreciate those who are in attendance and for those of us who are here from the council, I'll just get, I'll get us on the record, please.
Kate Bradshaw.
Chris Simonson.
Kendall Harris.
And Randy Lewis, I'm sure the others will be here shortly from the council. We're going to turn the time immediately over to Gary, who will introduce this part of the, this part of our work session.
You bet. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So council and mayor, we have with us tonight Roger Timmerman from Utopia. Roger is the executive director, did I get the title right? And he reached out to us not long ago about the opportunity to potentially use CARES Act dollars to deploy fiber consistent with the CARES Act, which would allow people to connect and have access to broadband in the event that they, they needed that to work, to get access to education and things like that. And the idea would be to add some trunk lines that would go to each one of our parks and I'm going to have Roger talk about that idea. And then coincidentally, the city council has been fielding some questions and had some interest in the current Utopia program of fiber to home. The, the model for Utopia has changed over the years and there, there are a number of partner communities now with Utopia that they're, they're implementing fiber and thought this would be a good opportunity since we're considering the proposal for CARES Act to have Roger come and talk about that program as well. So this is a council work session. Please write down the questions and ideas you have as we go along and, and we'll see if we can play stump the executive director. I'll turn the time over to Roger. Thanks, Roger.
All right, well, appreciate you giving me some time to talk to you and meet with you. We've, so far the only thing we've done with the city, we've, we've provided some connectivity in the city. We haven't done any sort of fiber to home project, but we have, we do provide services to the city itself and some businesses. We hope that's been a good experience. I know there was a, you know, everything that could go wrong kind of went wrong in the construction side of things, but we, we hope we fixed that and that the service has been good and reliable since then. I wanted to give you a little bit of background on Utopia. I was hoping this was going to work magically, but it's not. Can you hit the next slide? Yep. So Utopia, at least, at least the pointer works, I guess, was originally founded by these cities. It's no secret that the original project didn't go so well, but things have turned around dramatically and we've had a lot of success. And so it started out as 11-city project and we've suddenly added a bunch of new partner cities. There's some others on here that are yet to be announced and we're growing rapidly. And we'll talk about what that structure looks like. Can you do the next slide? This is the backbone of the network, kind of go down from Idaho along the I-15 corridor down into Las Vegas and St. George. The main core of cities use kind of big blue blobs or cities where we have fiber to the home, but we do provide services in over 50 cities and, and Bountiful's one of those. This red is that bad phase I talked about. It was an important phase. We did a lot of things that were important from a long-term perspective, but financially it wasn't great. And in the cities that participated in this first phase of projects have ended up having to pay against the, the shortfalls of those projects. So you've probably heard of that. However, in 2009, we created the Utah Infrastructure Agency. So you'll see us use both acronyms. You've got Utopia and UIA, which is kind of like Phase Two and actually separate legal entities. Now, UIA was created to finance new projects. So UIA started financing new projects and every single one of the projects since 2009 has been successful. We've done over $200 million of projects and they're all being paid for from subscriber revenues. There's no cost to any of the cities in any of these projects. They actually have a really good track record. And so a lot of that was in those original cities, but we've done these new city partnerships under that model as well. You want to do next slide? Just wanted, we're just going to talk right to some of the, the things I know that will come up. Often we get accused of being some sort of anti-competitive overreach of government. You know, we hear that sort of thing. We just say, you know, we believe that's a myth that's just spread by duopoly providers, that those would be the incumbents. We actually are very pro-private sector. We're pro-competitive. We, we build infrastructure and that's what enables the private sector to thrive, much like we build roads and airports and things like that. On our system, we build the fiber and there's 12 providers that use that and they depend on that fiber to be able to, to provide the best internet in the, in the state. And these companies are mostly local companies too, so we're not supporting out-of-state entities and sending our money elsewhere. That money is reinvested back into our local communities. So these are all public, community-owned fiber networks. You can go ahead, the next one. So I mentioned roads, it's similar to that. You know, you've got FedEx, GPS, postal service, they all compete on the municipal infrastructure. Next slide. Airports, same thing. Next slide. So you have multiple airlines, they all compete on a shared public infrastructure. If you had Delta Airport, you'd probably have higher prices, poor service, but because they have to compete with other providers, they all compete, offer lower services, good service or also use somebody else. Next slide. We treat fiber that way. So we build fiber and all these companies and many more that aren't on this list provide services across that fiber. So they're not all coming in and overbuilding each other and digging and making a mess your rideaways. We just put in one fiber infrastructure and everybody can use that. Next. That's kind of what it looks like from a user perspective. You pay Utopia $30 a month for the fiber and then you can pick whoever you want from this list. A lot of different options from 250 meg, gigabit, up to 10 gigabit. Every address in our system, it's over 120,000 addresses in Utah that can get the service, 10-gig service. We're 10 times faster than the next fastest option in the state. And you've got different phone options, video. There's also security and lots of really cool add-ons they do. Next. So why do we do it? Well, it's not just about streaming video. We do it so people can work remotely, they can educate remotely, they do health, we do smart city applications, utility metering, we work with cities very closely for their needs. Transportation, we work with UDOT to connect traffic signals and we do a lot of projects with them, support future things, business connectivity, the actual schools themselves and hospitals all use fiber and need that. Next. Let's go next. We'll go through this a little quickly. Well, next. Just real quickly, I want to touch on a couple of the smart city applications. I could do the whole work session on all these cool things that you can do with fiber, but I'll just get a couple of them. Next. So this is one, this kind of shows that we use fiber and we connect things with fiber, but fiber itself also serves as the backbone for all the types of connectivity. So we connect data systems, we, we put in LoRaMan and Wi-Fi, fixed wireless, we provide connectivity for the mobile wireless providers. So fiber enables all of those things. It's not competitive. It's, it's actually the, kind of the anchor or the, the fundamental layer for all of those technologies. Next. This is an example of air quality monitoring. So we are the number one provider of air quality sensor data in the state. And so you see, this is just an example that shows Orem and Linden, which are Utopia Fiber Project cities, you know, compared to Pleasant Grove and Highland and Lehigh, have very few sensors in those areas. And so we have it down to the neighborhood level and we do that in all of our networks. Because we have connectivity everywhere, it's really easy to plug stuff in. So, next. This is another one. If you can mouse to that, the bottom left box, hit play. This is a thermal imaging system that we put in place for wildfire detection. We've got a few of these cameras. I don't know why the video's not playing, but I'll try clicking on there again. So these are actually pan tilt cameras that are constantly monitoring the high-risk bench areas for wildfires and the different fire departments use that to help. This is a good venue to talk about this topic. So this is a, a service that we provide because we have the connectivity to do it. And this system is analyzing that video constantly, looking for hotspots and problems and fire departments can use those fees. So just a couple of cool things we can do when we have connectivity. Okay, next. We build everything direct to homes and to businesses. Everybody has their own connection. It's not shared. It's, it's gigabit for everybody, but if you sign up for 10 gig, then we upgrade you to 10 gig and you're still not sharing with anybody. We're full generation ahead of everybody else. Next. This is what you have right now. I blacked out the names, so I don't want to throw them under the bus, but these companies are, are raising rates and gouging people and, and being accused and sued over fraudulent activities and other problems. So you probably, well, I'll just, I'll leave that one alone. Next slide. This is what people think. Utopia Fiber, we see this consistently that people, you know, somebody comes into an area and they ask, hey, what should I do? And, and people really, really love their Utopia service and it's recommended. We don't even have to go out there and market it that heavily, although we do. People love it and they recommend it and they want it if they've had it in the past. The next slide. Now, this is a net promoter score where we survey people what they think and we have a lot of people who would recommend the service to other people. Next slide. This is another rating we look at and this is Google ratings. And so these are the ratings of different broadband providers in, in Utah and Utopia Fiber has the highest rating and X-Mission and Beehive are second and third place. And they're both Utopia service providers. So we kind of share in that with them. Google Fiber does a pretty good job, but not quite so high and that's even fiber. So you, you don't, you don't have any of those options available to you. You are, you have this one and where essentially they go? They were on here. I must have messed up my slide, but their ranking is, is not great. Next slide. We've seen this sort of growth. It's been exponential recently. Coronavirus, we'd say that's the Corona bump. It kind of went up a little bit. We, we saw some record time there, but it's still staying very strong. As people are working remotely and educating remotely, demand has been very, very strong. Next slide. So that's who we are. All right. So there's two things we want to talk about today as far as opportunities in front of us. So this is talking about the CARES Act. So what we've done is we said, we would like to build connectivity at public facilities where people could use that as a lifeline. If they've either just don't have good enough broadband at their home to, to function or if they've been turned off from economic hardship, not paid, been able to pay their bills or whatever, we'd be able to, to identify some public facilities where there may be a park bench or a pavilion or something where people could at least get that lifeline and go take a class, do a job interview or whatever they may need. Now, as a, you know, not as their primary service, but at least we could provide somewhere they could go and be safe and have a good connection. And so the idea was, would be that we'd identify the parks throughout the city, we'd build fiber to those and build in some of the best Wi-Fi equipment that's out there and, and really give people a place they could go to get that sort of connectivity. Now, that would be appropriate use of the, the CARES Act money. You know, I wish I could use that for fiber to the home, but we can't. You know, it's, it has to be specific to this and it has to be done quickly and it has to be done and working by the end of, well, almost the end of December, a little bit before then. And so we would love to do this in 30, 40-plus cities across Utah. We identified our top five and you're one of those. And that's because we do have fiber right here in the city, in this part of the city. And you don't have a lot of railroad lines crossing across the city here to worry about. So there's some other areas where we were very concerned and we thought, as we looked across the area, this is a, is really good candidate for one of these projects. And so we approached the city and said, you know, we, we could do this. It's not cheap, but these routes would be in place for the city's use perpetually. I mean, people worry and say, well, but if you build that and, and, you know, then, then it's yours and, and you, you own it or something. It's like, well, no, this is a public asset. We're a public entity. We would have capacity in there to benefit if we ever did a fiber to the home project, but it's not dependent on that. It would be there and available for the city to use forever. And if you ever had other projects or needs for connectivity, those routes could be leveraged. These would benefit potentially schools and other sites in these areas. There's a lot of benefit that comes from having fiber in the city. But if you choose to do fiber to the home, that would actually offset some of the costs as well. So the, we did a design on this and it came out to about $1.2 million. And so we, we've kind of looked at this and we still have a pretty high level of confidence we could do all of these routes within that timeframe. We'd probably do one final pass before a contract if you wanted to move forward. Is there, there's a chance, you know, we might say, oh, we just, there's a water canal or something like that, that is just going to push us out past that timeframe. But that's, that's what we would like to, the city to consider. Again, it's, it's the CARES Act project, so what cities are fighting themselves in is that they have that money and don't really have a good purpose for that. And we believe this is probably the best use of that money that would provide not only short-term relief for coronavirus, but also a very long-term benefit to the city. So we would do it. We'd basically take care of it all and the city would, would pay us from that fund. Any questions on that idea?
So if you did that, then, then after, after you were done with that phase, then who would own that?
So, so it can go either way. If you say, we want to own it, that's okay. We, we would basically build it with capacity for both the city and UIA, so it would be kind of joint purpose. It's really easy to say, well, if we need four strands of fiber, we never install four strands. We put in minimum of 24, usually 48 or 96. So there's going to be a lot of fiber capacity for you and us and anyone else. If you say, I want to own it and basically have an agreement to where Utopia gets use of it, then you also take on responsibility for locating it, repairing it and maintenance. So we're not saying we want to own it for the reason of like, it's ours. But generally, we prefer to own it and basically say, you get use of it for your own purposes as if you own it, but we'll take on the responsibility of ma- maintaining it, locating it, repairing it, because we have the crews to do that. We're already dealing with that across the state. And so the point would be, even if we do end up saying we own it, you would be given long-term IRU access to strands for your own purposes for perpetually. And, and so it's as if you own it. If that was a sticking point and you say, you want to own it, we would just say, okay, but we're not going to do this unless you take on the responsibility to maintain and repair it, because we wouldn't be able to get use of that system unless we knew somebody was taking that off.
Thanks.
So either way.
Yeah.
However you want it.
Yep. Roger, explain how that compares to the fiber that you currently have in, in Bountiful, like to here and beyond?
Yeah, I mean, what we have now, we, we maintain that. You know, if there's a fiber break or a cut or something in here, we have a 24/7 Network Operations Center that's monitoring things. We see something's down. We have crews that we dispatch, they'll go out there and diagnose it. They have the tools to, to see where the break is and they can fix and repair that. When we did the initial project with the city, we had a pretty significant upfront cost and we financed that for the city. So we ended up with, I think, an eight-year agreement? Maybe seven years? Oh, nine years? Okay. Just to get the monthly recurring cost down to where it was similar to what we were paying or at least close. And yet we were able to recover our investment over time and, you know, from a business perspective, no business in their right mind would do that, but that's what UIA does. UIA finances fiber projects in behalf of cities and uses that to just provide benefit to communities and expand upon that and, and grow that. So it's a little different in that situation. When, if this is all paid for by the CARES Act, you know, we don't have to come to you and say, oh, you want connectivity for some other purpose. There's no non-recurring, there's no upfront cost to build that. So it's not that it would be free, but it would be just the cost of service rather than the cost of service plus this enormous financed, you know, infrastructure cost, which from the city's perspective, on that initial connection on the nine years, most of that cost is in the financed cost of the construction. So compared to what you have now, all of your additional connections that would benefit from these routes would be extremely cost-effective. I don't want to say cheap, but it would just be just the cost of service rather than the cost of service plus capitalized or capital financed cost.
Roger, I have a question for you on the, the parks you've selected. There's, there's, we have a, a significant park that doesn't have one of your thumbtacks, Creekside Park. Is there a reason? Is that one too difficult to get to or?
We may just missed it. I don't know. I asked our guys, I just told them, go pull the list off your website of parks and design it. And so I don't know what the reasoning would have been for them to exclude it. They may have just missed it.
It may just be on the site.
We could add it.
Creekside is, it's the newest-ish.
The Dock Park's newer.
The Dock Park's newer, although it was a visiting park, but you know, the new Bountiful Town Square also looks like it's not on here.
Yeah, anything that you want to add to this, we'd love to add it in there. There's no reason not to unless we identify either a railroad that's in the way or a really bad water canal or something like that. We, we could probably get through most of the water canal crossings and permits, but those are kind of on the border right now. We, we need to get those submitted for permits right now if they're going to get approved in time for us to build them by the end of the year. Oh, is it our town square's already covered?
The other question I had is, when you do fiber to the home, the homeowner has to select an internet provider. So if you do fiber to the parks, does the city select an internet provider or do you become an internet?
No, we become the internet provider. So when it's for public purposes, it just becomes a service through inter-local agreement versus a retail offering to the public. When we go retail to the public, we have to have a private sector partner to do that according to Utah Code. But it's a little different situation when it's just a inter-local type agreement between governmental entities. So we would be the internet provider at these sites. We have enormous internet capacity, IP space and all of that stuff. So we're in a really good position. In fact, the city's using it right now. So it would be the same, same sort of connectivity, although we, we would isolate it from the city's traffic. So we can't like hack into the city from the parks or anything like that.
If you're looking at a couple of different cities using this CARES Act money and we have that hard deadline in December, what would, what would happen if construction delays took place and it looked like you could only make it to a couple of the parks? Would, would there be some pro-rata amount that would be charged? Would we retain the rest of that CARES Act money?
So, so if, if we don't meet the requirements, like we say, we can deliver on these sites and we will build them by these deadlines and we're unable to deliver, then we're on the hook if they can't be reimbursed. If for some reason they say, hey, this just isn't approved, this is, gets challenged for some reason because of, I can't come up with a reason, but we've got some conversation around this. We're like, can we get a rubber stamp or a pre-approval on this stuff? And they're not offering that from the state's perspective. They're just saying, use the money under, under the terms given and we read the terms and we all believe that it's approved use of the funds.
So I would love to believe that construction projects always start and, and on time. That has not been Bountiful's experience, unfortunately, with some of our projects. And so that's what I'm worried about is, is that construction projects always seem to take longer and it, and if we hit our drop dead time and you'd only made it to, you know, three or four of the parks.
Yeah, we'd only be able to get reimbursed for the amount that we completed by December 30th. And, you know, what happens to the rest of the money, we still don't quite know, just that it, you know, there's a potential it goes back upstream to federal government, you know, where it came from. You know, there is hope out there that they may extend the timeframe for projects that are well underway and things like that, but right now it is a hard deadline of December 30th. And what's done by that is, that time is approved and what can't be done by that time isn't approved. So we would, you know, I, I could say, there's, there's a reasonable chance to say we get $800,000 along on this sort of thing and say, we just, we're just not going to be able to get to those furthest parks. We're just going to have to scrap those ones. But it, but it wouldn't be a situation where we say, because of our inability to build it, you're still on the hook for that money. That would, that would be on us from a construction performance perspective. If, if for some reason we said, hey, that's great and it's built and you met the requirements and we paid that from CARES Act money and someone challenged that, that is a use of the money, we don't think that would happen, but that would be on the city, you know, the city would be on the hook in that situation. We don't think that's likely. I, I would hope you'd say, we want these connected anyways, but you know, obviously we're not, none of us are planning on that coming out of any sort of city budget. So. And if we ran into some sort of scenario like that, I mean, we, we'd work with you. Again, we're in the business of financing fiber projects. So, you know, there's definitely opportunity for us to say, well, cred, you know, maybe, you know, a million dollars of that thing is paid for from, from CARES, but there's another couple hundred thousand that was ineligible for some reason. And if it fell onto the city side of the agreement, we could say, well, we don't, we don't need that money today. We could finance that on nine years or something like that. We, we'd have to have some way to recover that over time, but not, not necessarily a one-time payment. Okay, so that's CARES Act. Any other questions or should we jump into fiber to the home? Okay, I'm guessing there's going to be a lot more questions on that one. Okay. Yep, next slide then. Okay, fiber to the home or as we call it, fiber to the premise, because we do care about other things that aren't homes. We care about our businesses, our schools, our churches, or the city and all of the other things. So when we talk about this, it's fiber to the premise and we build everywhere. The way we've been doing these partnerships, basically this is the agreement on the Utopia UIA side, we finance the project. So we would borrow the money and we would pay off the project. There'd be no city debt. There'd be no cost to the city. It's beautiful and it sounds too good to be true, right? But I'll talk about how that all works. We receive some of the money. There's actually two bills that we have. There's, we do get a portion of the revenue from the service providers. We use that for operations and maintenance, but that $30 that we bill, that's to pay that bond. And it's our bond again. I know bond is a four-letter word, so just be very clear, that's not a Bountiful City bond. That's a UIA bond and UIA is very good at it and has been, is paying all of its bonds very well with a lot of headroom and very good revenue-to-debt coverage. So anyways, we take care of everything.
Can I stop you there? Real quick?
Yep.
Quick question. So in your, your original cities, that, how have you made sure that those original cities are paying on that bond versus the newer cities not?
It's actually a separate legal entity. So they are, their contracts and obligations are with Utopia and all of the new cities and new phases of projects in those cities are under, with contracts with UIA. And we, we call them both collectively Utopia Fiber. So it's kind of a marketing term that encompasses both Utopia and UIA, but the, a Bountiful City partnership would be a UIA project. It's completely isolated legally and financially from all of those projects that are pre-2009.
Are they insulated from the post-2009? So if Woodland Hills doesn't hit their subscriber totals, would Bountiful's residents be then paying back the bond?
Yeah, they're not collective, so the, so I, I guess I got to clarify that. UIA does have some collective bonds, but you, but then we also have some city-specific bonds with corresponding obligations. That what we've been doing with non-member cities that are coming in as new, it's, your obligations would be tied only to the project in your own city. So you have no exposure to anything that happens as soon as you hit the border of the So what's the catch? The catch is right here. So services agreement based on a 35% take rate. So that's actually very, very good news. We have, we do modeling, we, we've done a full design of this network to every home and business and address in the city. And so this isn't just a high-level guess. This is with very high level of confidence that if we were able to get 35% take rate of subscribers in the city, the whole thing pays for itself and it costs the city nothing. We've modeled this in many cities and we've had some that are 40%, some that are 45%. We've had some that are 50%. 35% is very, very good. And the reason for that is because your frontage is relatively short here. So on an average basis, meaning the distance between homes is pretty low and we have some fiber in the city already. So a lot of these other cities, we may have to build millions of dollars to get to those cities. Well, we're already here. We may have a lot of distance between homes. Well, we don't really have that here. There's a couple of little pockets here and there, but it's, it's actually statistically very, very low. And we, we've got a couple of routes in the city as well that we can leverage. So that, that ended up putting your risk threshold very, very low relative to a lot of the other projects we've done. But we have some other protect, protections in here. So we say, well, other projects are, are successful. I'll go into some details on that. Any revenue from the city and any business revenues actually offset that. So as long as we get a reasonable amount of business, that actual threshold is offset. So it's probably more like 30% that we'd actually have to have, because the business revenue and city revenues count towards it. It's, the obligation really is a dollar obligation, not a take rate. But when we say, what does that mean and where's that money number come from, we kind of convert that over to a take rate. So you can understand that it's actually a very achievable target. And then every technology trend we see. And then every technology trend we see just demands more and more fiber. We do really well with 5G revenue and, and new technology and services and things like that. So we've just seen revenue skyrocket, not just from residential subscribers, but also on the business, also on the cellular, also on the schools and churches and all of that. And also over time, things get better. So any new development comes in the city, we build to and cover with no increased application from the city. The cost a dollar decreases over time. I mean, this is a, it's a 25-year agreement and $30 isn't the same 20 years from now. It's actually worth less because of inflation. So the effective cost of the service goes down and the revenue targets go down. And every technology trend favors it. So there's a lot of other things. So one, one point I'd make is if you consider all the things the cities do and all the cities, the things that cities pay for and finance and partner with or whatever, this one would be right up there with the very best, meaning whether it's a city center or city facilities or infrastructure like roads and sewer and water, water. Those things all cost cities a lot of money, but they're worth it and they're important. This one is right up there among the very most beneficial projects for a city. And yet this one pays for itself. It's, it's really cool. And I would argue that it's worth it, even if you had to pay for the whole cost of the project upfront and, and tax for it or something like that, it would be worth it. But you don't have to under this model, which is really cool. And so some of those benefits are that on average, people will reduce their cost for telecommunications services by $27. There's nothing else the city can do that just instantly saves people $27 a month per household. That's a significant financial benefit to the city. It increases property values by 3.1%. And there's a link to the study that shows all of the different cities that have been evaluated into the study. But those are huge benefits that actually exceed the entire cost of the project just there. But not to mention you improve quality of life, you protect net neutrality, bring in competitive options, all those other benefits we already mentioned. So anyways, no other municipal project brings as dramatic an impact economically and in equality of life than putting in a fiber project. And I, that's my opinion, but I think it's, it's pretty just, pretty defensible. UIA partnerships brings you all of those benefits with no cost taxes or subsidies. So it's, it's, it's pretty cool. All right, next slide. Let's just skip the next one. Okay, this is the, the flow of money. So this is for the minimum service. We have 250 meg, gigabit, 10 gig, lots of different business options, whatever. But basically a customer signs up, there's no contract. They could sign up for a month and cancel if they wanted to. There's no installation fee. You may heard, I heard that it costs thousands of dollars. We did away with that. People don't cancel Utopia. It's the best service out there. So we got rid of all those obstacles to signing up and now tons of people sign up and they stick with it. And our financial position's really, really good as a result, but it's also a lot easier for people to sign up. So no installation, no contract, $65 a month. We use $35 to first pay for that bond. And then we also use that to invest in additional installations. So we say, we're going to finance, you know, 35 to 40% of, of the installations in the city, you know, the, that take rate. But we're probably going to go get 50 or 60% potentially in this city or more. We are going to finance those, but we'll, we'll pay for them out of, out of that money if, if we get to that point. And then there's also a churn expense. So if somebody cancels, somebody else signs up, we haven't changed the revenue, but we've had to pay some money for that. So UIA pays for that. The retail fee. So a service provider, they bill 35 bucks generally. We don't set that. They, they compete and modify that and do promotions and stuff like that. But we get a portion of that money and that's what pays for our operations and maintenance. And it also pays for their cost of service and customer service and all that. So that's, that's kind of where the money comes from. Next slide. Okay, this is our model for Bountiful City. So what we would do is, is because of the size of the project, we would do two financings. The overall project is about a $31 million project that we would bond for and we would pay for. But because of paying interest and other things, we would do that in two separate transactions, two years apart from each other. As we build this, about 10 months in, the first areas would be completed and we'd start having revenue growth. And this is an extremely conservative growth, meaning we don't actually get to that 33% take rate for five years. So we have a lot of time to market and sell. And, and every UIA project, see this green line? Every single one of them, and I'll show you, they just went up like this. They all cleared that debt service obligation before it even hit. But this is a break-even scenario.
Sorry to interrupt you. I'm hard to see back here. So the take rate, is, that's not an initial subscription rate? Is, there's a period of time to get to the take rate before there's an obligation by?
And that's very important to know. Because it, you know, I, I wouldn't come in and say, yeah, yeah, just day one, we're going to have 40% of the people signed up. You know, it takes time for people to get out of their contracts and to market and grow this. And we've got a lot of history of that where we say, we went and built networks and we know what the growth is of that. And, and we, and our history shows that curve coming up much faster than this. But we, this is modeled intentionally to show you a break-even scenario. And that break-even scenario with no shortfall to the city gets us only at 33% take rate. So the contract will say 35%, but financially, we actually hit that break-even point at 33% as long as we get there within five years, assuming a curve like this. And the way that works is you'll see any accumulated revenue, we don't have any debt payments due for two years. We have two-year capitalized interest period in the financing. So we accumulate and bank any of those revenues so that when that debt obligation hits, we are buffered and covered. And so we actually only need about a 15% take rate after the first couple of years, which is ridiculously low. We believe we'll have the 30 to 40% take rate before that first debt payment is due. But this is incredibly conservative. And then again, we have the second financing that hits, the, the obligations hit four years in. So we actually draw down the funds at two years with two years capitalized interest. And then, and then we have the revenue sufficient to cover that when the time comes. And so with, when we look at this, we say, this is, this is a piece of cake. So next slide. Well, let me do two slides ahead. We might come back to this one. So, so these are our charts for other projects. So the UIA projects are blended across many projects and they cleared that hurdle easily, but there's been lots and lots of different phases and steps. But this one's a little more concrete. This was a single project with a single financing. It was a $23 million to finish out the second half of Leyton City. And we easily cleared that debt obligation before we even needed to, even though we had banked about one and a half million dollars of buffer before that first debt payment was due. So we cleared it really, really well. We broke even six months before that debt service hit. Huge success. Woodland Hills didn't actually finance their project, so they don't get a chart. They just paid for it upfront. They had accumulated revenues for their project in advance and just basically wrote a check for it. So that's, they don't have a financing. But we do provide services there and we have over 70% take rate. Morgan City, we did a two and a half million dollar project. This is their chart right here. So that one was really, really good. So you see the light green was the forecasted, which that is a more aggressive curve than what we put on your chart for Bountiful. And yet boom, we got the take rate. And the reason it flattens like that is because that's where we are right now today. So we expect that curve to continue blowing past the obligations. But, but we already hit it and we're over, we got a year before we actually need to be there. Payson City, we just did that one and we were under construction. So we're right here. You know, our, our forecast was this light line and we've jumped ahead there and we believe we'll clear that. I mean, we, we could go underwater this quite a bit because all of this right here is accumulated and acts as a buffer, but we've never actually needed to use that buffer. We use that buffer really just to cover the additional installations. You know, when we, when we go up above this thing, we actually have a lot of costs that the cities aren't on the hook for, but we are. We have to pay for those installations of those additional customers and they can be anywhere from $800 to $1,200 an installation. So we, we're generally investing millions of dollars of UIA money with no city obligation into these projects. But it's that headroom that gives us the funding to do that. And we expect to do really well in Bountiful. So we, you'll, you'll say, hey, we backstopped this project, but you know, we expect probably five to $10 million or more of investment from UIA without any backstop from the city above and beyond that first $31 million project. Because we'd have a lot of installations. And so it's, it's kind of a joint investment partnership. So Payson's trending well and West Point's trending well. So those are two other projects that we're still in the very early stages and have not hit the debt service on those yet. But we're, we're doing really well. So you want to go back one slide? This is just some of the high-level assumptions around this thing. So UI'd finance it. The backstop comes out for a $31 million project approximately is, comes out to about 2.1 million annually. But we pay that with the subscriber revenues. That's what both of those phases in. So that's four years in. And so two years in, it's, it's half that. Oh, yes, right there. Next, I should have got to that point. But so anyways, we include the costs for the installations. So that gets us over the number that we need to the break even. We would be good at 33%, even if we, it takes us five years to get there. It's initial 31.6 million dollar project. And then we pay for all the growth and additional take rate. We maintain the system. We refresh it over time. We do all of this stuff. So really it's not a burden to the city at all. Other than that we kind of drive your permitting folks crazy for a little while as we pull lots of construction permits, but you know, we're pretty good. And we'd, we'd highly recommend you talk to West Point and Morgan and some of these other cities. They'd say their contractors are the best ones they've worked with as far as resolving concerns and repairing issues and fixing sprinklers. We do a lot of that. You know, utility marking doesn't do that. So if we do hit those, we go repair them and, you know, we do a lot of restoration work. Generally, it's the cleanest install there is out there for telecommunications though. I mean, the other guys have these big ugly green pedestals or basket boxes and stuff like that for cable and DSL. All of our stuff's under the ground. So it's a little messy as we dig it up and put it in, but it's all kind of just like a sprinkler box or even smaller with a little flower pot, but it's all surface level. So you're not hitting it as you're running. You're not running into it with your car. It's, it's actually very, very clean when we're done. And also a point to make is 100% of this is planned for underground construction. So there was some opportunity to save money if we did aerial, but we were told that was highly discouraged. And so we thought we would really benefit from doing some aerial in the city, but we don't really need to. The financial model works very well putting it all underground. Do two slides ahead here. So here's a couple of specific things to Bountiful. So and why it works so well here. You have an existing backbone fiber. That means that we can do this fast. So we can get that revenue moving quickly compared to any of the other projects we've been looking at. There's a lot of good business here. So any business we get, instead of $30 a month, we average closer to $200 a month from businesses. So your small businesses usually paying something like $100, but schools are usually paying a couple hundred dollars. Big shiny businesses are paying 500 to 1,000 a month. Cell tower companies or wireless providers are paying, you know, 500 to $1,000. And, and so the mix of that is, is very good because it offsets your risk. You probably break even closer to something like 28% of actual residential signups because you have a good amount of business in the city. The churches, we charge, we don't charge very much to them, any denomination. But they get a pretty good deal and the schools do get a pretty good deal too. Another factor is we look at Centerville. So the nearest city we think would be a really good indicator of what we would see here. Centerville has a 43% residential take rate. So we've done pretty well and it continues to grow. And it has, you know, proportionally, it has a good number of businesses. So 114 businesses. It's much smaller and we'd expect a lot more than that in Bountiful to sign up for the connect service. But if we did anything like that, you know, we cleared all risk and all cost easily in Bountiful. And we don't have any reason to believe we wouldn't do at least as well in Bountiful as we have in Centerville. There's a little bit higher cost of construction here. You've got some rock. It's not all good, you know? So our, our cost per foot is a little higher than some of our other cities. Fortunately, that didn't significantly or negatively impact the model too much. But, but one of the pluses there is that the, the density of housing, the frontages are pretty good. And so that saved us in, in the overall footage for building out the system. So from our perspective, this doesn't work very well in every city. We would love to do fiber to the home everywhere. But there are some areas we just say, this is a partnership and we, we worry, right? We're on the hook to perform. And if this project doesn't go well, that harms us as well as the city. And so to some extent, we're picking favorites. We can identify places where demand is high, where the success is likely and where we know we can deliver on that. And, and Bountiful is, it's really top of the list, to be honest. When I came as the executive director at Utopia a few years back, I kind of ranked cities on a lot of different factors of what they had and and cost and proximity to fiber and, and Bountiful is, it was actually the number one on my list, but, but I was assuming aerial construction. So your costs are a little higher. So anyways, next, next slide. So again, this is a very low-risk project. And we've looked at a lot of cities. We consider a lot of these partnerships as one of the very best. It's a very high reward project. So we top, consider our risk versus reward profile. There's a lot of benefits to having this fiber network in the city. And the threshold of any exposure financially to the city is very, very low in Bountiful. Next slide. So this is the process we like to follow. I like to start with a survey, just kind of see where we're at. And I'll go through a couple of example questions of surveys that we do. And if the results come back and confirm what we believe to be true, that you have lousy options and a lot of people would be interested and supportive of this, not just that they want the service, but they'd actually be supportive politically of the city getting involved because that's, that's a big part of it, right? You have a lot of people that may have the opinion that, yeah, I hate my broadband, but I don't want the city to do anything about it. And so we, we ask those questions and we find out what is the public support for this? Do they think this is the right role of the city to take action and partner in this sort of way? So anyways, go ahead to the next.
Do you draft that survey or do we draft that survey?
So we would draft it and we would give you a copy of it before we go public with it. It's online. And so we'd send that to you and we'd have the opportunity to modify any questions or tweak things. It would be done online and we would ask the city to send probably in your utility stuffers and through social media and any email address list you have to just get it out there to people. It would be done as a city survey, not as a Utopia Fiber survey. We think it's important for the city to get kind of a more neutral response from the residents rather than a here's fans of Utopia trying to promote it type of thing. And we would love them, but you know, we want to keep this as neutral as possible. And so once the city's comfortable with that, we would turn it live. We'd give you access to all the results. And then we come and schedule a work session to come and follow, follow up with you on the results and what that might mean for next steps. If you like the results and feel like there's still very little risk, we formalize our proposal. We actually ask you to do an RFP. You may be surprised because we, I hate responding to those. I just wrote two proposals today and I was up really late last night. So, but we do that. It's, we feel like it's, you know, we're a government entity just like you are and we believe in an open and fair process and you know, if somebody believes that some other company is going to walk in here and provide a solution, we ought to give them that opportunity and and, you know, there's talk out there of other fiber providers and expanding and they haven't delivered on much, but you know, we certainly, you should open the door to them to come talk to you. So as a result of that, you evaluate those and award a contract. We would finance the project if we're awarded. We would, you know, we say one and a half years. That, that's optimistic. So contractually, we're probably going to have two and a half years to completion of the construction. But we would try to overachieve on that closer to one and a half years. So.
Two and a half years to fully build out the city of Bountiful?
Yeah, the first area is.
Stone Ridge.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're building about 2,000 to 3,000 homes of fiber availability a month right now. We wouldn't put all of the resources in Bountiful because we do have other cities. And also new cities yet to be announced that are a little ahead of the schedule from you, but we'd probably put 500 to 1,000 homes of construction of capacity in the city. And that would, that would finish you up in about two years. I don't know if I'm asked right on that, but it's roughly that. Yep.
Green. Okay, green. I'm good. Can you describe a little bit more what build-out means to you and project completion means? Because you won't have 100% subscription rate. So
Right.
Completion to you means?
So we have it.
Where?
We have it divided into 10 footprints. So there's basically 10 areas and each one of those has a fiber hut where all the connections come back to those. And they get released as a footprint generally. get released as a footprint generally, meaning that we finished that area, we test the fiber, and we suddenly we announce that that area can now sign up. And that's complete, but no one has services. And so but but once that's complete, people can sign up for services. And within nine business days, you know, they sign up, and we have to do, you know, call it into blue staking and and schedule an installation, all of that. But it's generally a two week or less timeframe to actually be installed and have the service active in the home from that point. And so, yeah, completing it means it's available. Now, the first footprint will be done after about 10 months. And every couple of months, we would be completing an additional footprint. And we expect to have three to four footprints being built in parallel to each other. So as we complete one, it moved to the next one, but there would be two or three others also under construction at the same time. So first area is done after about 10 months. Last area is done after about one and a half years. I almost said two years. Next slide. Here's some examples of what we would ask. This was another city that's similar that we did a survey in. And we expect similar results here. You'd probably see cable being the dominant option here. Our next slide. We like to see how many people are streaming and what services they're streaming. We definitely have seen changing trends, and that's helped demand as more and more people are doing Disney Plus and Netflix and Prime and all of those services. And then YouTube TV and some of those are cable replacement type options. And those are getting very popular. Our next slide. Knowing what people pay is very important. You know, we actually would expect to have a similar result here where enough people, just on the basis of saving money on their service, for better service, but but even just on the basis of saving money, would be enough people to sign up. And then you have that other whole group who says, well, it's not so much about the money, but it's actually want service that's good and reliable and fast. And that gets us up into the really high take rates. And we believe we'd have that in Bountiful. But just from a cost savings perspective, we would attract enough customers. So next, you know, what speeds do people have? I mean, we would expect a similar result where most people have a speed that's slower than our slowest option. Our slowest option's not slow. So it would represent a significant new option available in the city. I'll do next slide. This is a net promoter score. If you remember, ours was a 64, and this one is not a 61. It's a negative 61. And this is what we're seeing in in cities across the state is that people really, really hate their cable and DSL providers. It just, it isn't just a neutral feeling. It's, it's really, really bad. And so we contrast that with us. It is a positive 64. People really like it. It's, it's one of the most frustrating things people deal with today is their broadband provider. And it really shouldn't be that way. We don't, we don't deal with that way with our energy provider, you know. Do people feel that way about Bountiful Power? No, they love their Bountiful Power. And if it was unreliable and charged them overages and had all these price manipulations, I mean, we wouldn't put up with that. But we've been putting up with bad broadband in Bountiful for a long time. So this would really help things out. And next, next slide. We're out of time, aren't we? And this is the political side. This when we we start digging into, yeah, you might hate what you have, and you might want better. But do you really think the city ought to be involved? And what we see is that there's, there's some very vocal minorities, people here. But you do have even people who you generally deal with, who oppose a lot of city projects, who, when it comes to broadband, will support this and think this is the right thing for the city to do. And then we kind of cut right to the chase with this one is, hey, if these were your options and prices, would you sign up? So this gives us a nice gauge of subscribership and take rates. So these are not obviously for this city, but it's a city nearby that's similar. And we expect that you'd have similar results. But we would like to confirm that with an actual survey in the city. And then, and this is just kind of goes into the political a little bit of, hey, if this is the structure and how the city partners with it, would you support that? Okay, next. Okay, so then back to this community survey is what we'd like to do for next steps. There's not any sort of financial commitment. We just do them for free. And so we kind of look for, you know, it's a work session. You can't officially vote on anything. But if there's even just like a head nod or something like, yeah, sure, there's no commitment. But if you were interested and wanted the city staff, you know, to work with us on doing that and promoting it, we'd love to take that as an action.
What is the life of that?
So the fiber life is 50 years or longer? The problem is, it's only been out there about 50 years. And there's people are still using fiber that was put in 50 years ago. But most long term investments and banks and other things will say that it has at least a 50 year lifecycle on it. This contract basically pays the thing off and covers it within 25 years. That's great. You know, we, you could make an argument that maybe we should have this as a spread out over more years. But there's, there's some technology risk. We'd rather take care of our debts and pay them off sooner. And so we do 25 year projects with the hope that it's there and in place and beneficial for 50 plus years. Now, the electronics need to be replaced every five to 10 years, depending on what it is. And that is all covered in our contract that we replace various parts and refresh this continually. So at the end of the term of this contract, you would have a brand new, up to date, modern system. Maybe we're doing 100 gig to the home by then. I don't know. People thought we were crazy and we started doing gig of it. And now we're doing 10 gig. So, yeah, it's a very long term benefit in future proof, I guess, would be the right term.
I'm curious to know, and if you already answered this, I apologize because I slipped in a little late. How big is your, is the survey just open ended to whomever wants to take it? Or is it a sample size? And how long does the survey last?
We recommend two weeks. And what we find is that we'll leave it open. And really, when the city pushes out a notification, whether it's a utility stuffer or email or something like that, you really see the responses come in over about three days, and then they they really are gone. I mean, it's not like it stays active for a period of time. So we would recommend that we activate it, you promote it through a couple of mechanisms like stuffers and emails, whatever. We leave it open for probably two weeks, close it down, come back and do a report. And just kind of ask a question at that point if we want to move forward. If you want to, you know, the next step isn't like move forward with the project. It's move forward with an RFP and see, you know, make sure that we're the best option out there for you.
Sure. And then just a follow up to that. How, what has been the response like, what has been the response been like in the past with other cities? Do you have like a 20% response weight, response according to population?
You know, it's been a huge difference. Cedar Hills was like, two or, no, it was like 3%, which was basically barely statistically relevant. We've had cities like West Point, where I think we had 20% respond. Morgan was really high. It just kind of depends how connected you are with your residents, how many of them are looking at their their mailers and things like that. So we consider 5% to be excellent. But often we'll get higher than that. So if we, sometimes we've come in and said, hey, we only got like 2% to respond. And we'll just, we'll start pushing out even more just to make sure we get into very strong statistically relevant territory.
Do we have any other questions?
Do we have any other questions from the, from the council?
Gary, are you coming to talk about cares out in general and the other asks we have that later day?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Mr. Timberman, thank you for being here today. It's a really good presentation. And thanks for your, thanks for your time.
Roger, can, can we get a copy of the presentation?
Awesome. Thank you. You can just email it to me and then I can get it. That's all right. Mayor, can we take maybe just about five minutes to get, let UTA get set up?
That's what I was, that's what I was going to look at. So we'll, we'll let Beth and Hal kind of set up here in the next five minutes, and then we'll begin.[1162.15]
Hi, Gary.
I'm on. Thank you. We'll all get started here. Uh, we really appreciate UTA. We appreciate Beth always. We're, you're just like always one of us here. Thank you for being back to Bountiful. And Hal, thank you for also being here to instruct us. So we're going to just turn time over to you.
Okay.
Uh, for the Bus Rapid Transit.
Great. Thank you. Um, thank you so much again for that great welcome. I always feel really welcome here and, um, and it's, it's an interesting feeling coming back, but I never actually was a councilperson here, so it is a little double weird. Um, I'm Beth Holbrook with the Utah Transit Authority, and I'm here today to take some time to explain, where we are at on our South Davis, uh, Salt Lake, or Davis-Salt Lake City Connector, uh, Bus Rapid Transit. And just for a little bit of background, um, I just wanted to talk about, uh, the meeting that we last had. One of the last meetings, I think that was in person, I think it was the end of last year. We met at WFRC's, um, offices, and we had a discussion about some of the aspects of the BRT and what we could incorporate into those, um, into that. Would there be, um, a willingness by some other communities to be incorporated within this BRT? And what would that look like as well? And after that meeting, uh, Hal worked up a, um, kind of like a structure of how we could incorporate some of the cities north of us, Centerville and Farmington, to be incorporated within at least the environmental phase. And that would allow them to be able to, um, be included in this Bus Rapid Transit. One of the things that we did in October of last year, and I know Hal's going to talk about, so I'm not going to touch on it too much, is do a study. You know, another one of those in-person things where you get to put dots wherever you thought you would utilize the system. And discovered a lot of data that we felt would be very valuable to incorporate. Um, most recently, the mayor and I and several other mayors in South Davis, so Mayor, um, Arvy, Mayor Talbot, and, um, Mayor Wilkinson, we all had an opportunity to sit down and have a discussion about what it would look like if, um, Centerville and Farmington actually joined this, uh, BRT project. So for some background, I was a council member here when this first iteration of the, of some type of transit service would, um, be incorporated within South Davis County. Um, that didn't go as well as people might have hoped, and it kind of, thank you. And it kind of created a situation that put a couple of our neighbors a little bit hesitant to be involved. And that, that initial presentation was a rail project and obviously very costly. It went down Main Street in Bountiful and then through Centerville, and there's a lot of challenge to that, and I'll just leave it at that. Um, but what we've done basically is, is reincorporate and re-review all of this and energize everyone again to see how this project can, can turn out. Now, when we did all that original stuff, we hadn't had UVX, which is our current, the only Bus Rapid Transit that we have currently today. And just for reference, UVX is actually, um, in Utah County, it starts and stops in the Orem Front Runner Station, uh, to Provo and back, and it incorporates, um, two universities along with their whole downtown. And they've done a massive revitalization, especially in Provo. I don't know if any of you are BYU fans, but that, that Bus Rapid Transit actually carried seventeen thousand people on the last, one of the big football games at BYU last year. And, um, we were, we've been really proud of that because that, that really has shown us that if we can structure a Bus Rapid Transit that will allow us to be frequent and have high levels of service, we can be effective through communities. So with that, I'm going to, uh, turn it over to Hal to kind of talk about some of this data that we found and where we are at, and then I'll, um, I'll chime in as necessary, and then we'll talk about the next steps. So let me introduce Hal.
Thanks, Beth. Well, it's really great to be here with you tonight, um, and I love working with Bountiful. You guys have been great partners with us, uh, for a long time.
He has to say that.
There we go. So, um, I've just got, I think I've got eighteen slides or so, and I talk really fast, so I'll, I'll just go through these really quick. Um, so this is the, on the right are all the, the project partners that are involved, uh, with the Salt Lake-Davis Connector. So, um, in just Bountiful, we've got, uh, North Salt Lake, Woods Cross, um, Salt Lake City, Davis County, um, Salt Lake County. I look like I missed their logo, um, UDOT, Wasatch Front, and UTA. So we've got a really great, uh, partnership, um, that's developed over the years. So in the presentation, I'm just going to touch on kind of local bus service, a little bit about the long-range plan, a little bit more in-depth on the project purpose and need, and then touch on the terminus options, uh, that Beth mentioned, and ridership, uh, modeling, and then next steps. Um, so part, part of the reason I, I always like to try to answer the why question, and kind of why are we looking at making improvements, uh, to transit in Southern Davis County? And, uh, so if we look at kind of the existing bus routes and how they're doing, so we have two different routes, main kind of routes that operate in Southern Davis County. We have a bunch of express routes as well, but we've got the four fifty-five and four seventy, and they're regional routes connecting from Ogden, um, all the way to, to Salt Lake City. And if you've ever ridden those buses, it's, it's about a two-hour trip from Ogden to Salt Lake. But we, and most people aren't riding it all the way from Ogden to Salt Lake. If you're going that trip, you'd take Front Runner. And so a lot of these are, people are using this for, uh, different five, five to ten mile trips along, along that route. And, uh, so the reason why we're looking at, at making improvements is, or these are two, uh, successful routes for us in the corridor. We carry about forty-five hundred people a day, uh, between the two services. So it's, um, it's, uh, merits some additional investments. And if you're all familiar, I love talking to councils because I don't have to explain as much. But, uh, Wasatch Front Regional Council, they're our metropolitan planning organization, and they do the long-range transportation plan for us all. And so Wasatch Front Regional Council's identified, um, in the long-range plan, a Bus Rapid Transit project to, um, basically make that connection from Southern Davis County to, into Salt Lake County. They also have a series of improvements along the four fifty-five and four seventy that are, that are also identified. Um, so this is just a little bit more about the specific project we're working on. So the, the Salt Lake-Davis, um, Connector, um, basically we finished up an alternatives analysis in twenty fourteen, and it was, um, as Beth touched on, there was, uh, you know, previous work and study that was done, and we re-scoped it, um, and kind of just focused on the southern, southern part of the corridor. So this was the, um, locally preferred alternative that was identified in that study. And it took a few years to raise the funds, but we got some legislative funding in twenty eighteen to, uh, take the next steps for Salt Lake-Davis Connector. And next steps would be, um, going into what's, uh, the Environmental Process or National Environmental Policy Act. That's the, the NEPA document. And so, and as part of the NEPA process, we'll also do, um, conceptual engineering. So we'll take and, uh, do enough design so we can kind of know what the impacts are and be able to identify that in the NEPA process. So that's, um, currently underway, and that's the process that's underway right now. So we've got, uh, a team on board, uh, from AECOM, they're our consultant team, and they're actively, uh, working on, uh, collecting environmental data. And we've been, uh, working to, uh, develop, uh, design options as well. So that's, that's underway right now. Um, so, uh, public involvement, that was actually a lot easier to do in COVID, or pre-COVID, uh, times. It was, so we could have meetings and such, and so we're, we're, um, just in the process of getting ready to, uh, we want to do another round of public involvement, um, with the project. But we did, um, last fall, we did, um, a couple of different open houses, and we did, um, a lot of digital outreach as well, um, last fall, and got a lot of good comments, um, on the project. We got a lot of people that came to the open houses and filled out comic cards. And the previous study that we finished in twenty fourteen, that was actually a high watermark, uh, for UTA as far as public involvement because of previous controversy. So we had literally done hundreds of different events and meetings. And so, um, what was, uh, we wanted to not have redo all that work, but we wanted to build on what was done. And so the public involvement that we did this fall was basically trying to make sure that the previous work was still valid. And, and we got a lot of great comments, positive comments from the folks, um, that came to the meetings as well as online, interested in seeing additional transit options. Um, as Beth touched on, uh, one of the things that we did is we had, uh, maps available for people to comment on where do you live and where do you want to go? And, uh, so we did, um, this dot exercise where we placed, um, uh, different color dots on the map as far as kind of origins and destinations. And, uh, one on the left is in, uh, uh, Davis County, one right, Salt Lake County. And so we actually heard even in Salt Lake County, there was a lot of people that were interested in going to Farmington. Um, and we saw that on both, both, um, comments. And then we also, in the, um, in the digital outreach, we, we did, we, we got that comment as well. And so we heard a lot of people are interested in kind of that regional connection, Farmington. You've got, um, at the Farmington Station with Station Park, there's a regional draw there with the land use and the office buildings that have gone in and the retail. And, uh, then you've got Lagoon, and so you've got a, uh, you know, a lot of people that were interested in seeing that. Um, we, we got a, a good number of people that were interested in kind of seeing it, uh, directly connect to the LDS Church office building, as we've got a lot of workers that come from, uh, Davis County that connect to the LDS Church office building. Uh, people liked, um, the higher level of investment that the BRT, uh, was contemplated. Um, and then we had a few kind of property owner concerns. Um, so the online survey that we did, um, these were kind of the origins and, uh, where people came from. So we saw, you know, people from downtown Salt Lake, Bountiful, um, just south, South Davis in general, University of Utah, uh, North Salt Lake and Farmington. So we could, had a pretty good mix of where people, uh, were interested in going to. And these were some of the questions, um, if, uh, likelihood of people use transit, um, if it was faster and more connected. And so, yeah, we got definitely interested in seeing ways to increase the speed of the service. And generally, we do that with kind of having, um, limited numbers of stops, and then we have transit signal priority and then exclusive lanes are usually the tools we use to increase speed. And that also helps increase the reliability of the service.
And just to clarify, transit, um, or the, uh, the dedicated stops? Sorry, I just realized. I just thought, lost that idea in my head. The, um, the buses are actually synced to court, to the, uh, lights for, um, access. So it keeps, it basically keeps the, the lights green as they're going. So the signal says, hey, there's a bus coming, keep this one green. And that's actually one of the values of, uh, the UVX and soon to be the Ogden Bus Rapid Transit as well, so.
Yeah, and generally, the way that it works is we'll get, um, so being in the fire station and kind of talk about it. So the fire department gets high priority, um, when, uh, with the, with the signal system. And so in the transit side, we, we get, um, low priority. And so it essentially, what it does is it extends the green time, uh, by ten seconds, or it'll truncate the red time by ten seconds. So it helps, makes a big difference on kind of speeding the bus through. Because if you can, you kind of make the first signal, you make the second signal, and then you can start to really, um, have the bus go faster. And then the big thing it does with reliability is it, you know, if you look at it as a bell curve, a statistical, um, bell curve, it just tightens that down. And so instead of having it be this wide, it ends up a much narrower band. So it's a, it's a big benefit, um, for, uh, the bus service. Um, and one of the, we're looking at, um, this was the, the red line was the LPA options that were identified, um, in twenty fourteen. We're working with Salt Lake City to kind of look at, um, some different options for the downtown terminus of the project. So that's, that's underway right now. Um, the Farmington extensions, I meant, as Beth touched on, um, that came up, uh, through the process. And so we have the, as I mentioned earlier, the four fifty-five and four seventy, the two regional bus routes. And so, um, for those routes, it's a better breakpoint to have them break at the Farmington Station than at the Woods Cross, um, station. And then, um, we, we've seen, I'll touch on in the, we've got a ridership slide down below, but a, a big increase in ridership, um, with the, with the, uh, proposed project. If we're able to connect to Farmington, and then it helps, um, run a longer section of, uh, parallel with I-15, where hopefully we can get people out of the, out of, out of their cars and onto the, onto the buses with this, um, new option. Um, so this is the, the ridership numbers, um, that he touched on, or wanted to mention to you. So we've got a couple of different ridership methodologies, um, that we're using. Um, but basically, the BRT project, um, we're revolving around twenty-five hundred, uh, riders a day. And then, uh, looking at if we go to Farmington, it kicks that up to between twenty-nine and, and forty-two hundred riders a day. So it's a big add for the relative cost and length of the piece to Farmington. So there's some, I guess, uh, additional cost, um, to provide the, do the NEPA work so that we can, um, incorporate the Farmington-Centerville piece into the project. Um, so as Beth mentioned, we've, um, had, uh, some meetings with the mayors, elected officials, and the other communities, and talked about some options. So the total, um, additional cost, um, to, uh, bring the Farmington-Centerville, um, bring that section online is about ninety-five thousand dollars. Total cost, uh, for the NEPA work underway is about one point two million dollars right now. So it's a, it's an additional incremental cost to, to, uh, bring those, uh, communities onboard. So we're, um, so did you?
Do you want me to go ahead?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Okay. So just to touch on and kind of follow up with what Hal, where Hal was going with that. So when we met with the South Davis mayors, um, we, um, had an initial rough estimate from the, uh, from the contractors who were doing, who are currently doing the engineering on this. And they came back actually with the final number of ninety-five thousand, which is a lot better than what we thought it would be. And, uh, UTA basically will cover fifty percent of that, and then we'll have each of the partners, um, put in a little bit of that remaining piece in order to, um, to basically, can, to add Centerville and Farmington. Now, obviously, Bountiful will be a little bit impacted because it will extend still within to Bountiful. Because right now, the nexus is up this south, and it would extend that further north through Centerville to, uh, Farmington. And one of the things that is, so basically, roughly, it's going to be a third of that other forty-five thousand dollars, basically, with, between those three communities. Um, what this will do is allow us to incorporate that within our current NEPA analysis and the environmental so that we can get a better understanding of how we can do all of those improvements to those, to the, those two routes, the four seventy and the four fifty-five, and, um, include the access points. Because one of the things, again, I'll talk about is that the biggest, um, investment that we're putting in is not just the buses, although that is the most visual part. We're also putting in investments within those roads. So there's a lot of, um, there will be bus stops, there will be, uh, uh, bus, uh, overhangs. There's other components that go into that as well. In addition, if you'll notice, um, UDOT is also involved, sorry, they're not up there. Um, and UDOT is a great partner for us with our BRTs because they are basically the ones who are managing the road portions of all of that. And they're helping us to be able to maximize access and then also maximize access to their, um, signal prioritization. The, the next steps that we, um, had wanted to talk about as well is, I also wanted to touch on, I've had an opportunity to meet with Salt Lake City with Councilman, um, James Rogers, who represents the area that the nexus would be, which is roughly fourth west and, uh, South Temple, South Temple. And he is actually quite enthusiastic about pursuing this further from the Salt Lake City perspective side. They have a lot of long-range plans that they are looking at in terms of what they could potentially do on, um, their second south access, which is a major access to the University of Utah. And the hope would be maybe at some point to even incorporate that into, all the way from the University of Utah to Research Park and then back. That, that actually was a big draw on our public hearing, um, in terms of where people wanted to, to, to go in order to utilize this. So does anyone have any questions? So basically, I'll just recap really fast, and then you can ask me a question. I said, do you have any questions? And then I'm just going to talk anyway. Um, we're basically at the point where we wanted to, we really wanted to see if Centerville was willing to kind of, you know, change our perspective a little bit and see if they'd be willing to do this. And Farmington has, has indicated to us that they are very happy to be engaged there. You know, as you know, they're doing a lot of the work in their Farmington Station area, and they have, uh, several other phases that are still going into Farmington Station. And that's obviously the west side of the Farmington City. This would, uh, cover the east side of Farmington City, which they feel is a really good nexus point. Um, Hal mentioned Lagoon and Farmington Station as particular draws, and those, um, bear out in all of our public hearings. And in order for us to do that, we want to, to get all the communities that will be impacted, so Bountiful, Centerville, and Farmington onboard. And if this is something that they feel would be of value, that will help us to complete this, um, environmental, and then we would move forward with the next steps. So with that, does anyone have any questions? Yes. In fact, oh, sorry. What was their, what, what did they say? So I, um, just to be clear, I haven't spoken with the council. I haven't done a council presentation like this yet. Um, but that's anticipated as well. We're trying to get onto their calendar. But the mayor was there, and, and he is understanding of how the connectivity pieces for his residence, I, he thinks that that can have a lot of value, especially because, um, and I don't know if you guys remember this, but there was a study that was done in about two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen that showed roughly seventy percent of people are leaving Bountiful every morning. Now, I recognize COVID does change that dynamic to a certain extent. Um, but the growth patterns, um, as far as all of the analysis that we've seen thus far, haven't really changed. And they do anticipate that there will still be a lot of growth in the areas that we're talking about. And, um, if you're having your population leaving every day, that means they are heading to these different destinations. And so in order to reduce congestion on, on our roads, we feel like that that has an added value to it as well. And so Centerville has expressed that they would be interested in, in at least, you know, contemplating this. And again, I haven't done a presentation to them yet, but, um, the mayor was pretty positive, which I thought was. And again, I haven't done a presentation to them yet, but the mayor was pretty positive, which I thought was a really good step. I, I don't know if anyone else remembers, but I certainly do. Maybe Councilman Higginson remembers of the contentiousness that occurred in that particular, at that timeframe. So, yeah, it was not. So that's a great question. Are there any other questions?
So, yeah, with the, with the planned route now going all the way through Bountiful instead of kind of halfway and stopping, does that change our financial commitments that we would have to come up with?
Slightly, yes. So the $95,000 that was just up there, there's a, there's that, we would pay half of that. So roughly $45,000. And then the other $45,000 will be split between Farmington, Centerville and Bountiful. Because it will continue to go through north of Bountiful.
Is there any reason Center, or Davis County wouldn't be, be a part of that 45% too?
And I totally think that they should be a viable partner. We've reached out to them, but we haven't had the official dialogue yet. So I can't, obviously can't make them commit. That's, but that is a great ask and that's what we intend to ask as well. So from the Salt Lake County side and the Salt Lake City side, they have done a lot of investment into their transit specifically. They actually had an added tax that added $5.3 million to UTA to increase frequency. The number one request is to increase frequency. They were fortunate enough also to, we started with our electric buses. So our electric bus, one of our routes runs right up to the university, it's an electric bus. For reference, Ogden City is in the final stages of the process for establishing their bus rapid transit. And we anticipate breaking ground either this fall or early winter, depending upon. Obviously, COVID does change things ever so slightly. But that route is actually, goes from our Ogden front runner station to Weber State to McKD and back again. And it goes through all of Ogden to where they've done a lot of their redevelopments at. And they're, they're pretty excited about that as well. And so the mode, all of that other dialogue is yet to come for the South Davis. But there is definitely interest on the communities in Salt Lake and Salt Lake County both have interest in doing this. And again, this is on the WFRC Long Range Transportation Plan as well.
So Beth, how, how happy are you with the BRT down in, down in Utah County? And how happy are they in Utah County to have this?
That's a great question. So I'll, I'll give you a little bit of background and perspective. So in my previous roles as a, as an elected official here in the council and then with the Utah League of Cities and Towns, I had an opportunity to engage with Orem and Provo quite heavily. And they were very much not onboard at first. And some of, some sectors of the population were concerned that it wouldn't be the value that they thought it would be. They didn't understand that, how this would actually work within their community. They were frustrated and they weren't really excited about it, to be totally candid. The mayors, however, were incredibly supportive and their councils and other, and the, and the Utah County Commissioners as well were supportive. And they wanted to see this come through because they had been doing a lot of growth in Provo and Orem. You know, Utah County in general, their growth is exponential. And they were concerned that they were going to have to have, you know, basically, they thought, those elected officials thought, if we don't do something, we're going to end up having to sit in traffic jams just to get to a grocery store. I mean, that's really kind of where they thought they were because they didn't have a ton of, you know, east-west, north-south options for them. So those elected officials fought really hard to, to get that involved. And when that was all completed, the analysis anticipated, and Hal can correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm using my memory here. But they, there was an anticipation that that would, it would go from about, I don't know, 4,000 to 6,000 riders initially through that. And I think it ended up.
Yeah, we're about 12,000, depending on when school's attached.
Yeah. And one of the things that we found is that there are plenty of people from Farmington, from Davis County, Salt Lake County, that are heading to UVU or BYU, and they are riding the system. And, and that was, that was also a community partnership with those institutions because we, they basically incorporated a pass within their student ID system. So any student would receive that as part of their, as part of going to the school. And that negotiation, I think, was one of the things that was really successful. So about 70% of the riders every day, so about, so of that 12,000, about 70% of those riders are students, either UVU or BYU. The rest are community. And they're riding it to get to maybe downtown to Provo. Or they live up by Ninth East or they live up, and I'm sorry, my Provo geography is just not 100%. But they live up near, you know, BYU, or they live over by UVU, or they live on the west side. And they're just getting on to go to these destinations. And that, that tells us that there's a lot of community support and that they're utilizing it in a way that even, I don't think they were as surprised as everyone else. I tell people this anecdotally, but there were definitely, you know, community members that were very unhappy. And they did not want to have a stop in a certain location, and I'm not going to say what it was. But they, we started, we started UVX, we had no stop near that area. And as their request, as they requested, and they ended up coming to us in, maybe not even a year later, saying, well, we want to stop. That's how much that turned around. And, and I will say that the, the frequency and having this extended bus is really what helps those, the community to really embrace this. And in fact, we had so many positive comments after that, that it really changed the dynamics and it changed the structure of all the dialogue moving forward.
Thanks, and I don't, I don't want to get in the way of council questions, so I'll wait to see if there are council questions. But I have a couple technical ones, if there aren't council questions first.
Any questions from the council? Back to you, Gary.
Hal, if I can ask you a couple of technical questions of things that we talked about. Adding the Farmington extension, will that add any time to the overall project implementation schedule?
That's a great question. So we're at a good point in the NEPA process where we can fold this in pretty seamlessly and not add time to the project schedule. So now, now's the time to do it. You know, the longer we go, the harder and more expensive it's going to get. So now's kind of the time.
Are you planning any lanes separated or dedicated lanes between Bountiful and Farmington?
The anticipation at this point is, is no, that that would be, the UVX project that Beth mentioned, it's about 50% dedicated lane, 50% non-dedicated lane. And so we're anticipating the piece from Farmington to Bountiful would be non-dedicated lane. So it would be stations, stops, transit signal priority, the branding and frequent service, but no lanes.
So you're not talking about buying right of way in front of buildings for lanes or anything like that?
No, the, the only right of way would be for the stations themselves. And then one of the concerns we have as a project team is that piece of, that piece of roadway is missing actually a lot of sidewalks. And so we'd like to potentially see if there's a way to add the sidewalk connections. Because ultimately, all the transit users are pedestrians at some point in the process. So we wanted to kind of look at some of those pedestrian connections. So it would be, you know, stations and pedestrian connections.
So if a community didn't want a station, they just wanted the same old bus stops that they, that they have now, would that be a problem?
Yep, they can have exactly what they got, so that's no problem.
So let's assume a community somewhere in the middle of Davis County didn't want to participate. What would prevent UTA, would that prevent UTA from doing the Farmington connection, say everybody else wanted to?
We could do it, and they would just get service and nothing else.
They would still get service.
They would still be, they would still get service, the buses would roll through, but they wouldn't get any of the other amenities with the, with the project. So, and they, they have, you know, decent service now, so they would still, you know, have the, the bus service.
And then last one for me, if you don't mind, is you, you had shown me that if the, with the Farmington connection, it changes what happens in Bountiful and you'd be looking at a community circulator potentially. Could you, could you explain that to the council?
Yeah.
That's a big deal, I think, for us.
Yeah, and that was, I didn't have a good map to show that, but I'll maybe just touch on it here. So one of the ideas that we've had is, you know, if we have the BRT project, instead of going to the Woods Cross Station, it would go straight through. But we still want to serve the Woods Cross Station. And so one of the ideas we've had is we would take an additional bus route that would connect over and go to the hospital and then go down Orchard and then connect into the BRT system. So then we'd have two routes that are connecting into the BRT system. And so in the southern part, we'd have, you know, doubling up the service. So essentially probably 10 to seven and a half minute frequencies, which is, you know, there's more, as you get closer in, the buses get fuller and fuller. So it's good to have more frequency in that section. So it's actually a really good use of BRT.
So this is an, an additional question, it's a follow-up question for those counting at home. I'm taking, I'm not taking credit for an additional question. We, when, when we talked early, way back before COVID-19, early this year, we were talking about alignments from the BRT to the hospital. And, and that included coming up Fifth, from, from Woods Cross, coming up Fifth South, turning on to Main Street and then turning up, I think it was Second South, second, yeah, Second South to go directly to the hospital. So in other words, going past the Bountiful Town Square, is that still something that's being contemplated?
Yeah, that, that's basically the route we've been looking at because we wanted to provide that connection to the hospital as well as provide service on Orchard. And so those were the, the two things that we were interested in with that connection.
Thanks.
And then maybe I'll just touch on the last couple of things on this slide. And I, I just wanted to mention, part of what we're trying to do right now is, you know, we have, we believe we'll have an opportunity that potentially in the coming year, there may be stimulus funds that'll come out as well as the normal funds that are available from the Federal Transit Administration. So, you know, I've been doing these kind of projects for about 20, 25 years now, actually. And my experiences, they're all different and they all get funded in a different way and they all have a different funding package. But there's always some opportunities that come forward. And so, you know, we're working to try to get this one teed up so that we can chase some of those kind of opportunities that may be out there.
So Beth and Hal, as we maybe need to conclude here, what are any other critical points that you wish to make of Beth or Hal before you leave?
Joe, anything critical?
I was just going to mention, Gary, we'll follow up with the county a little bit more and then follow up with you and the mayor on that. And then last thing I would say is we have, we're working to set up another policy meeting. The mayor's a member of the policy group, so we'll have a meeting in August to kind of go through some of the project details.
Perfect.
And then one other thing I wanted to talk about, unless of course there's any questions on the, the presentation tonight. So given that we are all wearing masks and we're all structurally, you know, six feet apart roughly, I just did want to touch on some of the questions that I think people have had about transit in general. So what UTA has done is, is we have basically taken this whole nother level of sterilization and, and daily maintenance and really implemented it on all of our vehicles. So it's buses, it's tracks, trains, it's front runner trains, it's the whole thing. And we actually have an interactive website that gets updated weekly that has that data. And that's www.rideuta.com/recovering. And that website will give you the totals that ridership is. So as you might have anticipated, with teleworking and shutdowns, initially, our ridership went down significantly. Roughly overall, 75%, it was down initially in, in April. And we have subsequently recovered. We've been asked this question, we do require masks to ride on the system. We're also installing sanitizing stations and mask handouts for every vehicle. We're in the process of doing that. As Hal mentioned, we received CARES Funding Act money directly to our agency. And what we were doing with that, in addition to those steps, is we're also installing bus operator shields. So basically Plexiglas to separate the operator from the passengers. We also have passenger rear door entry right now and, so that they're not passing by the operator unless they're in a wheelchair device of some kind and they need to have the front door access. And we're also replacing all of our claw seats in our track system with plastic so that they can be sanitized. And it's very easy and obvious in a way to see that. And that, we anticipate getting all of that completely updated. We've done some of it, but we're not completed yet. So those are some of the things that we're working on for this year to be doing in order to make sure that we have, that we can increase ridership confidence. I will say this though, that even during the height of March and April, when we were all basically in our homes with shutdowns, we were still carrying 41,000 riders a day. They were essential workers, they were going to hospitals, to grocery store work. They were, they were all walks of life in all areas. And, and so transit is definitely considered an essential service. And we are taking no chances and making sure that we're doing everything possible to, to increase ridership moving forward. Structurally, we don't know how teleworking will, will work or impact us, I should say, in ridership. But we anticipate that as, as we slowly, hopefully, are able to open in a structurally positive way, that our ridership will increase with that as well.
Thank you both. Thank, thank you both for coming today. And we're always so glad, we're glad to see you too, Hal, but we're especially glad to see Beth as she comes to Bountiful. We're so proud of her. So anyway, thank you, thank you for coming. And we'll let you go and we'll turn over to our next item, Gary.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate you guys and working with you and, and Gary and Francisco.
Soon.
So council, we have a few minutes before the regular meeting and we can start a conversation now. And if we need, we can take time at the end of the regular meeting to, to finish the conversation. But I think we just were looking for some direction from you all about the summer concert series and, and what to do with, with our upcoming concerts. I think you're aware that Handcart Days had a scheduled, had a concert scheduled for the 17th that have, they've canceled due to concerns about COVID-19. We just heard this week that the next scheduled concert, which was on the 31st, was our Beatles tribute band Imagine, has canceled for COVID-19 related reasons. And, and we're, I know that Richard Watson, who's here, is working with them to, they want to be re-invited next year and to have them back next year. But I think it raises the question about, you know, what, what would you like to see happen with the concerts the rest of the year? And particularly in light of some of the changing restrictions that, or requirements that we have. I think the applicable term here is the only thing constant is change. And it, it may make us appear as we're, we're facilitating as a, as a city. But as we've tried to be consistent with the changing health requirements, sometimes we will do one things, one thing at one time and a different thing another time. For example, about a month ago, the only requirement, once they changed to yellow status, the only requirement for an outdoor concert besides being under 1,000 was social distancing and some signage. In the latest version of the governor's guidelines, we now are required, what they call a, I think the term is a, I can't remember exactly what it is, a responsible organization, a professional organization. If a professional organization is putting on the event, and the city would certainly qualify, we have to do contact tracing. So we have to know, have a plan for who's attending and we have to get contact information from attendees. And this not only applies to our concerts in the park, but we're having a, a big increase in the number of requests for our own pavilions and for private events. And so this would, this requirement would, we would require those professional organizations also to, to do that same thing. So we're just looking for some direction on, on where we go from here. And that's, that, turn it over to questions. We have Richard here who can answer questions, Richard Watson, and I'd love to know what your thoughts are.
Is the Bountiful Community Service Council a professional? Is the Bountiful Community Service Council a professional organization?
Yes. Because they are the city.
Okay.
So, the requirements are, we would have to do contact tracing, and then, is there anything in the current guidelines about, like how many people are allowed to gather, anything like that? What is that?
No more than 1,000.
Oh, okay.
That is to say, the guidelines, the state guidelines say you can have up to 6,000, but, but in Davis County, you can't have more than 1,000 without a mass gathering permit, and the county is not issuing mass gathering permits, so we're cafted 1,000 people.
Okay.
Are we prepared at the, at the park for the concerts to somehow fence and ticket in a way that we would be able to count up to 1,000, or, or, you know, traditionally it's been kind of sit wherever you want, and we haven't obviously kept track of, of people in past summers that have attended or not, so how, how would we change that to make sure that we knew we had 999 people?
Yeah, we have a, I don't know, we have a gap there, I think, in, in the plans, and Richard, do you mind coming up to the podium? It's Richard Watson, for those who don't know him, everybody in the council does. Richard, I think, had a community service council meeting this weekend, and I don't know if you, if you discussed as a group what you would, what your feelings were about how, and how you might go about with your volunteers, meaning the state requirements. Did you have any conversation about that, Richard?
Not really. I did show them the state guidelines, and the one part about keeping track of people, it's just, it kind of seems like it would be a little tough for us to do, since we're just a small organization, and we don't pay anybody, except for our performers. I don't know, so, I mean, we usually have around 1,000 people or more come to these And the one band that canceled, they haven't played all year, so I don't, I haven't contacted the other bands, but I'm assuming they haven't played very much themselves, so, so, I don't know. I guess that's why we're here, to decide if we're gonna continue these concerts for the year. And I don't know about the car show one, did we know about the car show one, Chris?
Well, that's in your preview too, as far as Endless Summer, and that's August the 29th, so we've got to decide if we want to have that with the guidelines of, you know, 1,000 people, how we space. It seems like things are kind of going up rather than going down.
I talked to Brett Morgan earlier this week, he was, he's the Handcart Days chairman, and he said they just could not abide by the guidelines, and they just decided to cancel. So it wasn't worth the effort or the fight, and they didn't wanna go through all that, so, so I don't know, do we wanna think about the same thing? Do we wanna fight those challenges?
I think, Kate, to answer your question, to, we would either have to find a lot of additional volunteers to do that, or we'd have to have city staff help participate. The obligation, and Clint could answer this, but the obligation for the record-keeping, we have to fill out this form, and the organization that's sponsoring has to keep it on file for inspection with the health department. The obligation rests with us, with the city, even though it's a committee of the city that the volunteers is putting it on. So my guess is, we, if we're gonna do this, we either need to ramp up the volunteers, or we're gonna have to, you know, find staff to, to do that, and work, and together, regardless, we'd have to work out a plan on how to, I guess, identify where people are sitting and get contact information from those groups that are sitting together, the way I read it.
So, so Gary, we're, we're running out of time, is there something you want from us here, you want from the council tonight?
Well, it would be good to get direction, I, I don't, not having a concert on the 31st delays the, the need for that direction immediately, we were figuring we'd have to do it right now, but maybe in the interest of time, we could talk about this at the end of the regular meeting, and, and see if you wanna give direction tonight, or you need more information. I don't wanna rush the council to a decision.
All right.
Can I, can I ask the council, how do you guys feel about the upcoming concert for this year? Is it a, is it a risk, or?
We were really hoping to hold them, Richard, so that we could have some semblance of normalcy start to return. That's what we used to think.
Yeah.
But now we don't know if our papers are in order, so.
I would express that I do have some concern, given the rising cases that we're seeing and the rising use of, of hospital bed space. You know, the governor challenged all of us to wear masks, and we were all doing it here in the room tonight, so that is, is a positive move. He also challenged us to maybe think about foregoing some of the things we've always done, in an effort to, to drive down the case numbers, and it might mean sacrificing some of the things that have always made our summers fun. And so, in, in that spirit, I think we might wanna consider the, the thing we've been asked by healthcare leaders and by our state leaders about shifting some of those things where we know we'll gather crowds, and, and sacrificing for this summer, in the hopes that we get to have an epic 2021 concert series, would be my first one.
In the hopes that a virus that kills so few people will last even longer, and take even a longer time to make its way through society.
My feeling is, like our, our band that just canceled, the Beatles tribute band, I, I believe, if I talk to the other bands, they'll probably understand, and they'll be okay with coming back next year. But that's my assumption, I haven't talked to them yet.
Well, I think for the sake of time, Richard, we're going to get, we're going to need to get back with you with some direction. Gary?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, thank you, Richard, for your, thank you for your time. Appreciate it. This is the Bountiful City Council meeting, Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. We did have a...